Items, couple.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
For Bill. I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Chris to the Village of Cambridge Board of Trustees.
Can I second that?
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, on this one, I'd like roll call, please.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Reineck.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Yes.
McAllie.
Yes, okay. Bill, are you prepared to, congratulations. Are you prepared to, to take your oath tonight?
Sure.
And join us? Okay. Why don't you come up?
Come on up and...
I state your name.
You better say state your name.
Yeah.
We might want to stay standing for your oath.
Yep.
Kristen Wilson.
Right hand, ready, ready up to me. I'm Bill Chris.
Hi, Bill Chris.
Having been duly appointed as Village Board Trustee.
Duly appointed as Village Board Trustee.
For the term of May 2023 to April 2025.
The term of May 2023 through May 20, April 2025.
And then for the Village of Cambridge.
And then for the Village of Cambridge.
Do hereby accept this offer.
Hereby accept this office.
And swear to uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And swear to uphold the Wisconsin, State of Wisconsin, and laws and ordinances of the county of Dane and Jefferson.
And will, you can just read that.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Wonderful.
Okay. All right, well, congratulations again, Bill. And you'll, in due time, you'll get one of these little things.
Yep.
And, you know, we're glad to have you onboard.
Did you need to take a moment to text anyone and let them know it'll be a while before you get... Because it might be a while.
All right, okay, anything else that came out of closed session?
I would like to make a motion to hire Tammy.
Jordan.
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 Jordan. As our village, in the open, our open position for the village treasurer and deputy clerk, deputy administrator. With the, with the, as discussed.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussions on this?
So, just Bill, to bring you up to speed, Tammy, she has experience with municipal, municipal experience for five years. She was with the township of Medina. She, very positive, really good outlook. I don't know, Lisa, is there any...
Has an accounting degree.
Has an accounting degree, yep. So, she did all of the budgets for the town, the township, so. And township and village is a little bit different, but she embraces change. So, I thought that was a really good thing about her as well.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor of employing Tammy Jordan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it carries. Lisa, you may have some assistance, so you'll get ahold of her.
I will.
We'll make the offer as soon as possible.
Stay here, you've got a meeting that...
Yeah, you gotta finish after the meeting.
Okay, those are the items. Okay, moving on, public comment. Does anybody, we have four attendees, anybody, well, Todd, you're gonna be speaking anyway. Anybody wanna make a public comment at this time? Well, then I'll do one in reverse. Mike, thank you for being here. And you, you have given us a great deal of insight, and I think you've done it in a calm and a deliberate manner. And it has, it has provided elucidation in helping us understand a complex issue. So, for that, we appreciate it, and we wish you only the best.
Yes.
In Pickle City, USA, wherever that might be.
Maybe not.
Okay.
And let us know if you ever come back to visit, and we'll have a, we'll have a beverage together.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
We'll be back.
Good.
All right, okay, approval of consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, there's a typo.
Oh, yep, you gave me a couple typos.
Well, for the website, this is in the, in the meeting, the minutes from the village board meeting Tuesday the 25th. Oh goodness, where are we, no business. I didn't, I wanna say E. Yep, temporary, should be Class B, not Blaspie.
Blaspie.
Yeah, it's picky, I know, but...
Anything else? Anybody? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. All right, let's move on, reports.
I'm so sorry, Mark. Just one thing I wanted to make note of in the, from the Public Works meeting, only because we're being recorded and stuff. Can you let us know, can you let everyone know what new brush pickup policy is? And can we, can we not refer to the location that brush goes to as a dump? Because when people think of dump, they think of other things besides just brush and trees and things like that. Yeah, and that's what we don't wanna get into, so I'm sorry, if you can...
I'm sorry, I thought I had put on the agenda to talk about the...
Yeah, do we need board approval?
Yeah, and I thought I had put it on here.
Motion to recommend to the board to approve it.
Must've missed that.
Legally can take no action right then.
No action.
Did we take action, or did we just...
Recommend to the board.
Recommend it, and I, I don't see that I put it on here, so we'll get that on the next agenda.
Okay, then we can wait till the next agenda then. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, all right, now I'll move on to reports, and I'll start off with President's report. I've got two items. I continue to get phone calls regarding Water Street, which is right here. And we have a business that is...
Spring Water Alley.
Spring Water Alley.
Spring Water Alley, this way.
That street's that way.
Yes, Spring Water Alley. I got two more this week, and that's on top of about 10 people who have called me up wanting to know what we are doing and why this street is getting to be looking like, I'll, I'll, I'll just be nice. It's, you know, it's an auction out there, and I don't know what, if anything, we can do on this, Lisa.
I have been working with the police and with the building inspector. They've been in contact. There's certain things by ordinance, they have said this needs to be done, this needs to be done. So, they're on top of it, they're working, we walk a fine line because it is private property. But things that are in violation of our ordinances, the building inspector and the police have been in touch, they have been working. Saw, you know, at one point, there were trailers in our parking lot.
Blocking the entrance.
The police gave them 48 hours to move them, they were moved. I saw another one back today, I don't know if it's still there. You know, so they're working on it actively. And he had said he is cleaning out the one building, he's going to be doing some remodeling, and that's where this is stemming from, but police and building inspector are working on it.
Okay, I'll be talking more about this, to the extent that, you know, calls are coming in, so.
We've received them in the office as well.
Yeah, and then the only other thing I wanted to say is committee assignments, I'll be working on those. And that's kind of underneath upcoming stuff for referrals. But now that, Bill, you've joined us, we'll, we'll get the committee assignments. Economic Development Committee.
We did not meet on Monday. We will be meeting again in, or perhaps the new, maybe the new Economic Development Chair might want to take over and decide what to do with that meeting.
Okay, all right. We'll get the committee assignments and then we'll go from there.
All right, all right.
Okay, that's Economic Development Plan Commission.
We also did not meet yesterday, however, I wanted to announce that the Smart Growth Plan survey is live. So, there, you may have seen on your bill, your water bill, there's a little link on the water bill of where to go for it. If you don't know where that is, go to the village website, ci.cambridge.wi.us. And right there on the front, there's a QR code that you can hover over and scan, and it'll take you to the survey. It's a Survey Monkey survey. We need at least 400 people to, to take the survey, so.
If, if we click on that QR code from the...
I tried that, and it took me to, just searched for the image, and it came up with some other ones that wasn't it.
Could, could we get that?
Get a link?
Yeah, if we could get a link on the website too versus just, because some people might not have a cellphone to take the survey from, where they would take an online survey from a computer.
It should not take very long to do, if you're gonna do it. Pretty simple, so please go out and do that. We really need input from the general public. So, that is all I wanted to say, and thanks for letting me at least have a chance to say that.
Yeah, we've gotta get 400 in order to validate it.
That's the goal, to get the...
The goal is 400.
That's the best sample, well, that is the goal sample size to, for, to be within the margin of error, you know, to be representative of our full population, 400 is the best sample size. If we get more, great, but 400. It does ask you where you live, so it doesn't have to be just people in Cambridge, it can be people in the outside area.
People who work here, not live here, you know, so.
It's a lot of different scenarios, so please just go out and take the survey, even if you own a business in town here, you know.
And these surveys have to be submitted by?
We have one month.
The end of the month.
All right, the end of May?
Yep, that's what it said on this, on the website. I noticed it on the website today.
By the end of May?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, it went out on the bills, that went out first week in May.
Okay, all right, thanks, Eric. Joint Law Enforcement, Tim?
So, at the meeting, we, we requested numbers from, from our deputies for the last five years, and they did a presentation on, on our numbers of calls and things like that, broke it down into 10 categories that were the most called upon, and that was reviewed. And the numbers were what our patrol people do, and then patrol being Dane County itself, and then our contracted patrol officers, and it broke it down, and who answered what, who called what, and et cetera. Broke it down into monthly numbers, weekly, and daily, and even went down to hourly average. So, the big numbers came under 911 calls, traffic-related incidents, EMS assistance calls, check area or property, assist a citizen, check, check on a person, parking, phone calls, assist the agency, and alarm calls. That was a big thing, and that was to see where we were at with the amount of deputies we have on, on contract. If we needed to go up another half a body, or three quarters, or whatever, and that was all discussed. And then we got an update on our deputy that is out on medical leave, that had a possible return, which is really nice. So, other than that, that was about it.
Yeah, what I found interesting is that between Deerfield and Cambridge...
Oh, it's about half and half.
Yeah, straight down the middle between the, you know, number of calls.
That was interesting, sorry.
And their population is a little bit more, but we also have two highways.
Right.
So, I guess that, that kind of explains it. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, sir.
All righty, I'm wondering if we could talk with Todd Lord, Director of Public Works. Can you come up and introduce yourself, sir?
Hi, Todd Lord from Public Works for Cambridge. All right, Director, sorry. Been, been kinda busy. We had a very productive meeting for Public Works. Am I supposed to go into this, what we talked about, or...
No, well, as we go, we run it generally.
Okay, okay. Anyway, we're, right now, we're, we, we just got all the flags, we're getting ready to set that up for Memorial Day weekend. We got the, we finally got the light poles, hallelujah. Took forever to get them. I think, what, six months for one pole? So, we, we got them, now we're, now we're gonna try to get those together this week and get them back up again, and then have 1901 come and rewire them for us. Just been busy. We're, we're turning, we're turning spring into summer and, and stuff like that, and it's, it's rolling. Grass is growing crazy. We just caught up with a little bit of it today, but...
How's your street sweeper doing?
Good.
The new one?
Works good.
Good.
We just got it, we all have to get trained on it. That's, that's the thing. We're, we've only got two guys that are trained on it right now, we need, we need everybody to be trained on it. Because when, when Lee has time in between doing testing, we'd like him to get out there and do it too, you know, because that way I can keep those two guys on, on mowing and stuff like that, because right now, mowing is, mowing is king right now. You can't even keep up with mowing right now, it's that bad.
Do we have any areas that we're gonna put to mow May?
I've never done it.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I think that's great if we don't.
Well, the, the thing is, is that we're, we're trying to spare our equipment, and if we hold back, if we hold back on doing, not mowing, we're beating our equipment to bring it back to what it needs to be.
Yep, yep.
And grass, grass, just in a week, went like this, you know, just imagine it after a month, you know, what it's gonna do to a machine. We're trying to spare, we're trying to spare the machines right now.
Sure.
You know, we're not trying to beat on the machines or anything, and that's, and that was another reason for the, the second and fourth thing for, just to go easy on the chipper, so we can have that around, you know, it's, it's a nice machine to have around.
So, last year, in the summer, you hired an intern who assisted with some of that mowing and things like that. Is there plans for that this year?
I'm not sure.
No, last year, we were short, we've since hired more time, Public Works.
I, I think that, I think that we can cut it now.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're starting to adapt to that, they're, they've, they've planned out their, their spots.
Okay.
And had a meeting with Well 3, that both, both 20,000 gallon tanks are in the ground, and they were burying them and setting up the piping for that. So, they're, they're, they're moving. So, they're right on, it seems like they're right on schedule, that's the way it sounds.
Have you gotten any quotes for the new plow yet? For the new plow? I don't think that's on the agenda.
Oh, that was gonna come back to Public Works, right?
So, we, at the Public Works meeting, we discussed for equipment, we, we desperately need a new plow. It's a two-year wait.
Yeah, yes, it is.
So, we need to get moving on it, and so we made a recommendation to the board that Todd's gonna start, we're just gonna start getting the quotes for the new plow. They've run a 160,000 pay-upon receipt in a couple of years.
Things have changed. He told me that in...
You're talking about a new truck with a plow?
Yeah.
Remember that, remember that, 160 to 200,000? Add 5,000 to that. It's 205,000 if, if they change the, if they change the, the fuel, the fuel, something to do with the fuel for better fuel, less smoke or smog or anything like that, that's another $5,000 added on that.
That's where you have to...
So, you're looking at about 205 to 210,000 dollars to replace a truck. And I talked to him about, about trading in the other one, and he said that's about eight grand. He said you'd be better off to sell it yourself, so.
Eight grand for the trade-in?
Yeah, so that's, it's not even, you'd be better off to try to sell it to get some cash out of it, too. Put down towards that, because I think you could at least ask 15 and maybe take 12 at that, at that point. But that truck, you cannot find parts for. And everybody that looked at that truck is like, I know those trucks. Nobody wants them. Took two weeks just to get one part to get that truck to be able to plow snow. And that was for the air brakes. Gotta have brakes.
You think?
What, what's the brand of it, the truck?
International?
International, MV607. That's the double plow with a, with a spreader.
Todd, bouncing back, the parade route, you and I had talked about this, it's gonna be a little different than last year?
Way different than last year. It's not, it's, yeah, back to, to original. It's going from, it's going from Lawn Street to Lawn Street to Mill Street, and then it goes up that way. Then they go up the back way and, and not down, they, they do not want us blocking two county highways. Because...
I've been working, we had to submit as a village road closure to the state and so forth, so we have approval that the police have been working with them to...
And I'm working with them too.
Yep, Todd's been talking with them, so we've been working so we don't have these same issues we had last year.
Absolutely do not need what happened last year, because nobody knew what to do.
Right, can we, can we publish the parade route, so people know what that is? Can we put a map on our website or something?
We could, we do have to, we can give it as information, but it is not a village parade.
Oh, that's true.
You know, the Lions Club is doing the parade.
Yep.
So, you know, there's, you know...
Maybe I'll reach out to Craig and, and Michelle and ask them about making sure that gets published somehow.
Yeah.
Chris knows about it, I know that we've talked, and so...
But they are, they are gonna be in charge of shutting down the no parking. You know, just putting the colons out at seven o'clock in the morning, making sure that nobody's parking out there. And they are gonna, they are going to, they're gonna do the majority of the share, they're gonna do the lion's share of the, of the work, they want to.
I think they're anxious for the opportunity.
Yeah, they, they wanna take the burden off of the village and do it.
I think it's gonna be well-run.
The only thing I, the only thing I have to do is run signs for them. And that's detour signs and stuff like that.
All righty, anything else for Todd?
We'll handle the brush pickup in the next.
Yep, and Public Works will be having another meeting to, once we got quotes and so forth. And I know the village property, that was something we've discussed on, where we may not need to mow as much, or if we have other plantings and so forth, so that's another thing.
And this hill would be a really nice one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, keep those lawnmower blades sharp and, you know.
Will do.
And keep the dam alliance down to a dull yellow, so.
Will do.
Thank you very much, Todd, appreciate it.
Welcome to the herd, by the way.
Next up.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, next up here is Village Office Updates. Lisa?
Like Eric said, the survey is live, it went on the water bills on the websites, we've been working with MSA on that. Lot of time the last two weeks working with the auditors, our Form C is due to the state next Monday, so they're hoping to have all of the financial stuff in tomorrow, get it approved, so it can get to the state Monday, PSC report is due the 31st of May. So, Derek and Vicky have been working a lot on getting the information they need for that. So, they're proceeding well with those. Also work the auditors, the accounting branch, do have us caught up on our reconciliations through 2021, working with them. They started on some of 2022, so we've been sending them information for that. Treasure position, obviously, closing out the April election, Dane County did already start, we had some training last week for prepping for next year's elections, as it will be a big year next year for elections. There'll be changes coming down from the state on absentee voting and other things. So, started prepping us on that. A number of ongoing projects, some of which may be on the agenda, others, you know, meeting with some developers, so forth. Working with on the parade banners, you see, went up. We've had a lot of solicitor permits lately. People wanting to go door-to-door, they come to us to get the permit, police do their background and so forth, and... So, we issue them the permits, so if we get a phone call saying, somebody's knocking on my door, yep, they're allowed, you know, these days, they're good, and...
So, do you actually give them a piece of...
We do give them...
So, if someone had a question, they could say, can we see your permit?
Can we see your permit?
And we'd be, they'd be able to produce that?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So, to go along with that, I'm, I'm piggybacking on that, does every person that they have out on the street have a copy of the permit?
They should.
Okay.
Each one is issued to an individual, not to the company. So, each individual needs their own permit.
Okay.
Yep. Solar panels for homes have been a big one, so that's been the biggest. Started the liquor license renewal process that will be coming up in the next couple of months once we get back all the applications, the licensing committee will be meeting on that. So, a lot of stuff going on.
So, we'll have a spring election likely, well, we will because of the board.
We will, yeah. There's no fall elections this year.
Yeah, all we do is have elections. I mean, it's constantly going on.
Tell me about it, I finish one, and next one's there.
Okay, all right, well...
Are we, are we done with elections this year?
I am still entering the April election. We will not have any more this year, but...
But, but you'll have a rest, once you get the April stuff in, you'll have a respite until...
Except with new changes coming, so as an example, all of our absentee envelopes will be no longer good. They're coming out with three new, different absentee envelopes that need to be used for different, you know, so, things are changing, things have to be ordered, yeah.
Are we, are you gonna have the, was it called Badger Books?
The Badger Books, we do have them, we just received the printers. Those had been backordered, we just received the printers, so we will get some training scheduled for that, and hopefully we'll have those up and running for February then.
That would be great.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It saves on the backend too, where I'm not manually entering the whole election.
Exactly, yes.
So, hopefully for February, those will be...
It's like a digital voting system.
It's the, checking in the poll books, so you're not signing the poll book, it's all on a, a screen. You can do the registrations right on it, and...
Okay, all right, lots going on. Thank you, Lisa, appreciate it very much. Let's move on to item 10, bills. Summary here, Lisa?
The first run was in the amount of $21,840.93. The second run was $11,145.49, for a total of $23,986.42.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $23,986.42.
I second.
Okay, discussion, questions, concerns, issues?
I, I had a question about the background checks, but I think you may have answered them with the solicitor things.
Solicitors and operators licenses, we do an online check, and then the police do a more in-depth check as well.
All right.
Derek got some training.
Yep.
What was that for?
Both Derek and Cody went up to the Wisconsin Rural Water Association Annual Conference, so it's ongoing water training, and it does count for points for their recertifications.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. I noticed at Streetlights, we had two accidents, and the total was $6,955.50. This is all reimbursed, correct, by the insurance companies?
Yep, they will be submitted to insurance.
Okay, all right, so that takes care of that one. The next one... The next one, the plumbing inspections over at the vineyard, all the permits there, same thing?
Yep, is that under the safe bill?
Yes, safe bill.
Yeah, that's all the inspections that our building inspector does.
Is that for that new condo that's going up?
I don't have a packet in front of me, but he'll list on, in the bills, it's all the different permits that he's issued, and... So, I guess I don't have it in front of me, but...
Pinecrest, West Ridge.
Yeah, and that's the normal building inspector, they...
Vineyard.
We collect and they get back, I believe eighty percent of...
Well, the reason why I'm asking if it's the new condo that they just poured the foundation for?
It's probably the water lateral inspection, the hookup.
Right, 'cause now they started, isn't that the pizza pit thing that they just started? Okay, so that is separate to what this one is, correct?
There may be six different permits in what was built back there. I can't tell you exactly what permits are all there, but yes, they do have the permits to begin the new work as well.
Those were the questions that I had, anybody else? Okay, we have a roll call, we have a motion and a second, I'd say we go to a roll call right now.
Phelps?
Yes.
Ryan Egg?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitworth?
You?
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Christ? McNally?
Yes, alright, bills are paid, thank you. Let's see, new business, discussion, possible action, and there really isn't anything.
No, some of this is new, I'm sorry, I, agendas were being switched around Friday afternoon, so I'm sorry, some of this is new, some is unfinished, so I'm sorry about that.
Well, then just underneath business, whether it's new or unfinished, no mow may proclamation here, item twelve A.
This is proclamation we've done the last couple of years for residents, if they don't want to mow, the village doesn't enforce our ordinances on lawn height and so forth, to promote...
Pollinators?
Pollination and so forth, so...
So, does this apply just to residents, so, like, businesses still need to mow?
No, anyone, any citizens, residents on property in town, if they so wish, it's up to them.
We don't ever get any complaints on this, do we? There's no, I can think of one or...
Some people aren't happy when we send in June saying, okay, now we have to mow. Well, don't I get more time? Nope, no mow may is over, now we have to mow.
June first, boom, no mow may is over.
We're out there, midnight, you know, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the no mow may proclamation. Making a motion to approve the no mow proclamation. Do you wanna read it, Mark? If it gets approved, do you wanna read it? No, okay.
No, okay. Keep them going to the village website, look at the packet to see what the proclamation is.
Yeah, I've got it right here, but we've got a motion to accept it, anybody wanna make a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is anybody, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of no mow may proclamation being approved, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries Arbor Day proclamation.
You wanna read this one?
Yeah, you, I should just really, I'm gonna deal with you later. Do you wanna make a motion to...
Oh, sure, yeah, I will happily make a motion to approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
Alright, okay, discussion on the Arbor Day proclamation?
No, we've been doing this for many, I think more, we've been doing this for more years than no mow may, so...
Yes, it's part of our Tree City USA, which we just received for the seventeenth year, I believe.
I, I do wanna read the last sentence of it, of it.
That's where I was gonna go with that.
May I?
Yes, you may.
May I, alright, "I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations."
Okay.
Go trees.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, now we've got Arbor Day proclamation taken care of. Street use permit, Cambridge area Lions Club, North Spring Street, May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, stage for the band for Memorial Day.
I make a motion to approve the street use permit for the Lions Club on, for Memorial Day.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Eric, any concerns in your neighborhood?
It's not on North Street, it is on the best section of Spring Street.
Just that chunk by the bank and church?
Yeah, so, again, in our discussions with them, we're going to make sure that it goes up later Friday, so it's not blocking the bank entrance for drive-through on that Friday. So, to go up Friday evening after the bank is closed.
Alright.
No, actually, take that back, 'cause Memorial Day's on Monday, so they're not open on Sunday, so I was thinking Friday, Saturday, so, so we're good.
Did you notify the church? Jerry, Jerry Sims? He might wanna, you know, they're taking it in through the back way.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be till later on Sunday that it would go up, so...
I could say something to him, there'll be a stage over there. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the street use permit for the Cambridge, I, Lamb, Cambridge area Lions Club, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it carries, thank you. Item D on business, begin the RFP process for Spring Water Alley and Possible Allen Street, recommendation from Public Works Committee?
I'll take it, so Spring Water Alley Street is in real rough shape over here, as you've noticed. And it started over the past three or four months, we had so much snow and rain this past couple of seasons, it's really started to deteriorate, so we're looking for a total reconstruction. And since we had all that rain and all the weather, Todd is working, Todd and Lisa are working with MSA to get emergency funds and possible grants to help fund this. So, that's the primary focus right now, Allen Street is also in rough shape, but I think we're going to patch that for now.
We can patch that for now.
Well, I guess that's open for discussion, but Spring Water Alley's gotta take a priority here, and Allen is next, so it's, you know, total reconstruction would be a lot of money. I guess it depends on, on what we can get for emergency funds and things like that, if we can move on and do Allen as well, but...
So you might be asking why a full reconstruction, not, why not just a mill and overlay? There's actually sinkholes that are opening up, and so when you're done here tonight, go look at some of the sinkholes where they're literally falling in.
Yeah, the drain systems are collapsing.
The curb and gutters...
It's time.
...deteriorating, rotting from the bottom up.
That's for spring, that's for water, okay, Spring Water Alley.
It's going south real fast.
Do you have any estimates at all on what we think?
I'll, I'll let you know when Joe meets with me.
So that's, we got, got RFP for this, and then, when are you meeting with Joe?
As soon as he decides, and he just got back from vacation. He wants, he said something about Bill?
Bill is the other person...
Yeah, he wants Bill to be there too.
Yeah, working with, you know, so...
Okay, sorry, so, so with, with spring, so that's gonna be a complete reconstruction. Allen Street, is that a need for a complete reconstruction, or is that a mill and overlay?
That, that could actually, could it be a mill and overlay? Aren't they doing the, aren't they doing the, condos are doing the curb up there?
The condos may do the curb and gutter on their own, because there's areas...
I'll have to inspect that, and get back to you on that, 'cause I'm gonna take Joe down there, when we'll, we'll look at it and assess it.
If you do a mill and overlay on it while they're putting in that new gutter, isn't that gonna make the street higher than the gutter and create more chips along the side of the street?
They mill it down, they put it, they put new back down.
And they mill it down right down to the, generally now when they mill, they wanna make sure they get down to the gravel and check, check what, what's going on underneath. But a lot of that is, is that road's probably fairly old, there's, the patch is still pretty good, that's where they have one big huge patch there, and it's absolutely perfect right now, but the rest of the road is collapsing.
So, I'm sorry, at, at Allen?
Yeah, on Allen.
Okay, so...
This is collapsing from the, from the bottom up, it's starting sinkholes. Because what's happening is, is the, the catch basins are, are collapsing.
Got it, so, so is there, is there some cost savings that we could see if we went out for a bid for both versus one?
Right.
That's where my question is kind of coming to.
That's why I asked it.
Right, that's, I think that's what you were asking too, so...
'Cause that would make sense to do that.
We can option out, so we can see the separate...
On the curb and gutter, I've been in contact with them quite a lot, they've got some quotes to do certain sections there, where if we do the road, it would be us determining which sections come out, and they'd be assessed back either way. So, if we're going to go out for RFP, they may hold off, if it's going to be another year before we get to them, they may move forward with the curb and gutter on their own.
If we don't have any dollars for grants, if we don't get any grants for this, or any dollars elsewhere, would we have to just go out and get a loan?
Yes.
To pay for this? And... Okay, so I guess I don't have an and with that, just your yes was all I needed, thank you.
I know that this spring alley here is bad, you know, Todd, you and I looked at it that one day, you were out there with the Bobcat putting in some cold patch, and it is four feet deep.
And, and I did, I did forget to do it today, I did forget that there's another hole already starting in that same spot, I mean, you can go out there and look at it right now, it's, the hole's, the hole's forming again.
Well, as long as you've got something around there, because some little kid coming down, I mean...
Don't you have some big sheets of sheet steel behind your salt shed, that you could lay over the top of, and you don't wanna block the storm drain, but...
I don't think you want metal, metal sitting there, you'd have to, you'd have to dig it in and make sure that it's dug in, and if you don't end up doing anything to the road, you're better off doing what I'm doing right now. Just coming in every day or every other day, filling the hole and packing it down.
And what is, what does that cost us? 'Cause, I mean, 'cause you have to wait, you have to wait for cold patch in order to start patching the, the roads, so...
I've been getting cold patch, I'm starting to, I'm starting to fill in.
Right, but, and, so how much is that costing us each time, so, you know, we really shouldn't let this go on too long, because...
No, we shouldn't.
We've, we're paying good, we're paying good money after bad.
It'd be different if it was just the top layer, it's not just the top layer, it's the curbs, it's the curbs, it's the road, it's the catch basins, it's, the catch basins are literally disconnecting from, from one to the other, is what's going on, they're, they're crumbling. And a lot of that has to do with the type of soil that's underneath it.
So do we need a motion on this, to begin the process, or to go out?
We don't want to wait too long to go out for RFP, just because we're already into the season, so it would be directive if we want to work with MSA to go out for RFP for one or both roads.
Alright, I'll make a motion, we begin the RFP process for total reconstruction of Spring Water Alley, and an option for Allen Street, so total reconstruction of Allen Street, and I want another option for a mill and overlay of Allen Street. And also to direct Todd and, and MSA to continue to search for funding, emergency funds and grants moving forward.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? We don't have a price on this, so it's just, you know, I'll just bring the matter to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, Chuck, thank you for what you're doing here, you know, I mean, it's, we've gotta do something with spring, I haven't seen Allen, so I don't know, but this is right across from the library, you know, a kid could fall in that thing and you wouldn't see him. Yeah, alright.
Last time it was brought to my attention, there was a hole like this, and it was that deep, so...
When you can fit into the hole...
Yeah, when you can fit into the hole, that's a problem.
Todd, we know it's, 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 it needs some attention, okay.
Can you put some cones out or something?
You can put cones out, but it's, it's, what I'm doing right now is probably the easiest way to, so people aren't wondering what's going on out there, and kids are stealing the cones, and, you know, I, and again, unfortunately, I forgot today to fill that hole, you know, but it's, it's a hole like this, it's not, it's not this hole.
And where is it, where is it on the street?
Right across the street from the steps going up.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go look at that on my way home.
It's right behind my truck.
Okay, alright, thank you, let's move on. Item E, possible sale of a two thousand and five Ford F-150 to Todd Lord for four ninety-nine, four hundred ninety-nine dollars, recommendation from the Public Works Committee?
So the F-150, they have, what do you call it, the Fred Flintstone model, because the floorboards are rusting out, this thing's in super rough shape. We got the Kelly Blue Book Valley, it was like, what, eight hundred to a thousand dollars?
Seven fifteen to eighteen in fair condition.
In fair, but it's, it's less than fair, and I don't feel, I don't, we don't really feel comfortable selling this to some high schooler, you know, it's, it's not good.
And Modern Sewer has received their new truck, so...
So Todd was thinking he could use it on his property just for hauling stuff around, so we think that would probably be the best way going forward, and, you know, four ninety-nine, five hundred bucks is, is fair for everybody, so... So, that's where we're at with, with that F-150.
I'll make a motion to sell the two fifty Ford F-150 to Todd Lord for four ninety-nine?
Second.
Okay, further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Todd, you have a new vehicle out there.
I have a new woodshed.
Enjoy your Ford 150.
Ammons, Ammons in Jefferson does great rust repair work, if you wanna pay for it. If you would want to pay for it.
Okay, moving on, quote from Sargentians to replace broken tiles and loose, broken and loose tiles here in the community room, Public Works Committee, you guys have been busy.
Been busy, so the, yeah, as you can see, the, a lot of the tiles are busted up and, and broken, so Lisa got a quote from Sargentians to replace those, looks like a, a good deal. This is gonna be a temporary solution, as we wanna re-floor this whole room, you know, we could do something really nice, make it look, look good in here, it's an LVP or something, but, but for now, we just wanna get them in here, patch this stuff up so no one slips or whatever, so...
So how much is the quote?
Eleven hundred.
Okay, I see that.
I have a little bit of discussion on this.
Well, we need a motion first.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the quote from Sargentians to replace the broken and loose tiles in the community room for eleven hundred dollars.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, you got a second?
Okay, so, at the VFW behind the airport, eighty forty-three, they had tile like this, and it just kept chipping in, and they wasted a lot of money, so what they did is they had them, some, what they did is they had a bunch of guys come in with scrapers, and take it right down to the bare concrete, and then they put this nice gritty type of...
Like an epoxy kind of thing?
No, it wasn't even epoxy, it was, it was like a clear varnish on the floor with grit in it, and it saved them a ton of money, just doing it that way. I'm not saying we should do it here, but I'm saying it should be considered, because it could save us a lot of money, that way you no longer have to replace tile.
I mean, that's, that's a good point, I mean...
It was kind of two-part, that right now they'd come in and just fix those that are broken, those, you know, I can walk around and show you, this one's loose and picks right up from the floor. So, this would be, like Chuck said, a temporary to fix what's loose, they would then come in and give quotes on this room, the hallway out there, the kitchen, the hallway upstairs, all as separate quotes, and we could decide what we want to do, if we want a different, you know, not tiles, if we want something else. if we want something else. It was discussed, this could be a good recommendation for Cambridge Foundation grant next year. So kind of a two-step, but story time and stuff for the libraries in here now, so having the loose tiles. They did pull it up, they don't see any issue with asbestos or anything, so it was kind of a two-step, and as we get to the next step, we could direct them what type of finish we'd need and so forth. One thing I found very interesting, as soon as they walked in, we get comments that people think this floor is dirty. Right away, they said it's not that it's dirty, it's the cement underneath, as it ages, if you run your finger over, it settles, so there's little humps in the cement, so if people walk on it, that's where the finish is coming off and... But kind of a two-step, the first step is just to fix those that are broken and loose.
I think this is good, this would be an excellent Cambridge Foundation project, because they love, you know...
I love your idea of no, let's take it down and put something over it where, where there wouldn't be a lot of maintenance in the future.
Little maintenance, easy to mop, take care of, no longer have to deal with this. And I'm just talking about this room and maybe the hallway. Upstairs is totally different, absolutely. But you have the concrete, you got a nice solid concrete floor, why not just use it and expose it?
Because, you know, concrete's in...
It'll always be covered up later.
All right, so, but we do have a problem for right now, so...
No, I, I understand, I was just, I'm just thinking of ways not to have to spend that $1,100 and just take care of it in one shot.
No, I thought the same thing, same exact thing. $1,100 is a lot of bucks.
If anybody wants to check it out, 843 is behind the airport on County Highway CV, and they pulled up all their tile and they just have bare concrete floor, and it's got that gritty type of, like I said, like a varnish on it, which is for concrete.
Usually it's a hardener, is what they put down, it's an aggregate plus a hardener.
Had texture to it.
That's the aggregate part?
Perfect.
Keeps it from being a slip pattern.
Right.
Well, if we want to submit this as a grant request, we can't do that until the end of the year. So here we are, it's in May, and do we want to take care of this?
Yeah, I, I think we need to do something now, and I know every dollar at Cambridge is important, but the...
It's cheaper than an insurance claim.
Bingo, and, and the lead time to actually figure out what might be the right solution for the, I think in the meantime, we probably need to fix what's there. That's kind of how I see it. But I love your long-term solution.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to move ahead with this $1,100 quote. It's money, so roll call, please.
Bryanay?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Allen Beck?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Phelps?
Sure.
McNally?
Yes, yes, okay. And then we'll keep this on top of the pile here for the end of the year. Okay, moving on, item 13, correspondence, really don't see anything, okay. 14, questions, referral to staff, future agenda items, organizational meeting, May 23rd. That's just the next meeting, right?
Yep.
I would like to put something up for a future agenda item.
Okay.
The street coming into the vineyards where the winery is, when they have functions, the opposite side of the street where now Pizza Pit is being put in, they just line that, and it makes, it's, you can't get two cars through when they have events on both sides. So I was wondering if we can't make that a no parking on the opposite side away from the winery? Because it is a, it's a safety hazard, people come around that corner, and we need to start marking our corners with yellow, 15 feet from the corner or from a stop sign, because they'll park right up to it.
Okay.
The winery does nice functions and stuff, but, you know, it's about safety of the, of the neighborhood, to include your park, you come down, well, you come in the back way, but a lot of people come in the front way and then go up. So it's just a hazard.
So you can get that on a future meeting, okay, we'll do that.
Go ahead, sorry.
I was going to say LBK Park, we're going to talk about that at a future time.
Yeah, I've been, I've been working with Blake Solenberger, the Vineyard HOA president. We're going to start fundraising with the golf funding. We got his wife, Megan Solenberger, she does fundraisers. She's going to put a plan together. Tim, I'm going to get you in on this. We're going to set up a meeting or something on the agenda to get everyone together, get options from Lee Recreation, to put a, you know, to kind of help, give us a goal for how much money we need. So that's going to start happening this summer, and we'll start talking timelines and start getting the ball rolling on this thing.
Okay, so I did check with the local business, and they have a tentative agreed to donate some money for that park.
Excellent.
We'll have this as a future agenda item, okay, good.
And so we need to find out where and how we need to have that written for that park, sorry.
That's, that's okay. Eric, you had something?
I want to hear from MSA about the road going over 134, where they're at with that. Just, even if it's just a, something in the packet, a letter or something that outlines where we're at with it.
All right.
And, sorry, but when the stoplight goes in at, for, when the stoplight goes in, are we getting a crosswalk there as well? So that people can safely cross?
Yes.
You're on 134, is that where you're talking about?
Well, Highway 12, 12 and 18.
So the other 134 is at Lagoon Drive, this is at the 134 and 12 18.
Yeah.
Yes, we are requesting that the plans do have the...
It'd be a two-way crosswalk, one across 12 and 18 and one across 134.
I know that they were having a stoplight there.
Not across 134, because the plan was to have to go up to the bike path where the crossing already is there.
Perfect, yeah, I was just going to say, I, you're right, we've got the bike path, we can cross the 134. Yep, so just across Highway 12, that would be so fantastic. Because then that really does help to connect that part with the rest of the village.
Okay, anything else then that we want to talk about at another time? If you don't have it now, you can submit this to Lisa, and she can make it part of the next, next meeting agenda. All right, upcoming meetings, May 11th, we've got the Library Board and the Fire Commission, Fire and EMS Commission will be meeting here. It's a joint meeting of the five municipalities. This will be in closed session for the, for the board here, they are invited. May 16th, Water and Sewer, and May 23rd is the Village Board. And that's it, item 16, anybody?
I'll make a motion to convene in the closed session for statute 19...